Oh, no, yeah, last time I see.
We'll call this work session to order. Unless there's objection, I'd suggest we do the pledge at our regular meeting when the audience is here. We'll do that, is that okay?
Sure.
So let's move down to voc office.
Commissioner Kramer, present. Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross, here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner, present.
Thank you.
All present and any public comment this afternoon?
Well, sure. So you probably think you're going to talk about housing, well, I think you already have that in your mind. And the Housing Action Committee is going to work on how to make some suggestions on how you might participate. So on my mind today is renewable energy and climate change. And I've looked at history out of my dad's files just as a curiosity. Just like your friend that comes to the home. So this is like looking back at history, sort of the AAA report of 1914. You're going to drive your car into Leland County. It was right for transition away from horse and buggy transportation to ice powered engines and internal combustion engines. And you didn't want to stop and clover it in hotel or anything because you wanted to do it. You didn't like automobiles. Go there.
That is crazy.
He didn't like the what?
He didn't like automobiles.
He didn't like automobiles.
He'd rather have horse and buggy, huh?
Yeah. Right. You know, resistance to change. So we're kind of at that same sort of point in time where the major auto industry manufacturers have announced that they're not going to make gasoline powered cars anymore. So we have to kind of think about changing. So getting to the renewable energy issue, the United Nations International Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, just issued another morning. Our world needs climate action on all fronts, everything, everywhere, and all at once because we're really firmly against that carbon level in our, you know, CO2 level in our atmosphere where it will be maybe impossible to change, to turn this shift. So I would suggest looking at like the city of Potawatka or Traverse City did resolutions on climate, renewable energy change. I could supply you with those things where it sets the goals on how you can make the transition to renewable energy. Certainly solar panels on this campus would be a great site. There's money for that kind of stuff so you could put solar panels down and start charging vehicles with electric power off the road grid. Renewable energy is available to hunt. I've got lots of people who enjoy reading the legislation at the federal level and on the state level and are into with the two utility companies so we know what's happening and how we might work with those people to be effective. So installing solar panels and living the example of the rest of community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Any other public comment? Then the purpose of our meeting is to review the summary of services document that our administrator has prepared and talk about what we need to do. So Deb, it's yours. And would you remind us of our schedule for today?
Sure. So the meeting obviously started at 4:30 here. We'll make every effort to finish up right around 4:00, or I'm sorry, 5:45. So that gives you about 15 minutes. There will be food in the other room in between meetings and then we'll move into the session at 6 o'clock. That will be a review of the budget documents. So kind of not necessarily in its entirety, but an overview of the budget numbers so that when you're looking at your EBSs and some other things, those numbers make sense for some of our new commissioners as well as reminders. And I believe there's a few other key points that our Interfinance Director and our Chief Deputy Clerk will be addressing to spark that discussion and then we'll move into our regular meeting.
Thank you.
So last month I presented to the Board a summary of all of the different services of Leland County. And the intent of that document was to give you an overview of each department from their perspective. Ideally, I had asked them to just do a two-page document because I didn't want to inundate you, but 117 pages later, I apologize. But I think the information was incredibly valuable. And from that information, after reviewing each of the department heads' reports, it gave me some additional insight into some of the areas where I think we have some upcoming challenges and some opportunities going forward. So that's what was the focus to my executive summary. So there were three components of the executive summary that I want to address with the Board today. The themes were people or positions, our facilities or property, and the third one was our programs and partnerships. So I'd like to start with the first one having to do with our people and positions. A perfect example of the importance of this is the decision that the Board took last Tuesday to create the appropriate structure for a finance department. So that structure is actually mirrors what we currently have in several of our other departments. For example, our emergency services department has a Director of Emergency Services in 911. There's a deputy assistant or an assistant, I should say, for that position. And then there are the other individuals that make up that department. So with that in mind, that was kind of the first thought process. The other thing that I realized, as I shared in my report, is that we have several of our department heads that have amazing brain trust. They've been with us 20, 30 years. And while that is amazing, we also realize that that means that they could retire at any time. And so to start a transition plan, to start looking at how do we help them to create an opportunity to start transitioning some of that knowledge, transition some of that leadership by setting up the appropriate structure so that we're not in a situation where we find ourselves that person leaves and there's just a wealth of knowledge. And a perfect example, I think, not that she's planning on leaving anytime soon, I'm going to shackle her to her desk, but you know, Trudy is a prime example of how she's been here for over 30 years. She's done an amazing job. She continues to take on new challenges, new opportunities. But when we look at the scope and the depth of the work that she's doing from brownfields, the land bank, land use, solid waste, housing, re-monumentation of our roads and systems, Planning Commission, and the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan Development, that's a system in and of itself. And to think that one individual could come in and just take all that on is probably not realistic. So how do we start that process so that we are being responsible for county government and management going forward? So there's that's one example. Another perfect example is our maintenance director. Again, been here for 30 years plus. And you know, when we had the Leland, or the Government Center in Leland, Leland? Leland. Sorry. That a brain grant for a minute. You know, there were three maintenance people. Today, we still have three maintenance people. And we now have the Government Center, you know, the courts upstairs, the Sheriff's Department, the dispatch, the jail, the Leland Dam, the county parks, the new towers, and the wastewater treatment facility. That's a lot to manage with the same asset skill sets and things. So this is why we've had to go into contracts with BMW where we're contracting for people to provide additional services. And as we look at additional programs such as Phase Two and Three of the HVAC system, that's going to require additional technical experience as we look at potentially the build-out of the basement. That again is going to be a higher level of demand on our services, on our infrastructure here within the county building. So I think that that is definitely something that we need to be looking at. And it's not just a new idea. Many of the commissioners that have been on the Board for several years have heard the discussion about the need potentially for a facilities manager or some sort of agreement, contractual agreement or something to that point. So that is something for the Board to consider. The other one that is really kind of a smoking gun as far as I'm concerned is our information technology. We have an information technology technician that is not a director. She does an amazing amount of work here. But when you look at these reports that we got from our different departments, there were multiple scenarios where these departments are saying they're looking to implement new technology, new systems, operating systems, and software. Now, we only have one person and we utilize Safety Net for our cybersecurity. We just had a meeting today with Safety Net about some, I will say some gaps that we know that we have in our current operating systems in terms of technology. They're currently doing audits over at the Emergency 911 Service. The Sheriff's Office will be doing an audit tomorrow about, and this audit is completed by the FBI and by the Michigan State Police. So they're looking at who has access to our systems, how our systems integrate, and where our potential, I would say, liabilities are. I think I mentioned to you all that the MMRMA, our risk municipal company that carries our insurance, they have just gotten into a whole new division that has to do with cybersecurity. So it is something that I've asked Leanna to look at going forward, but it is going to be something that we certainly need to be considering as we look at firewalls, as we look at services, as we look at how we're setting up our operation systems. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to be looking at. In fact, they're in the process right now of preparing a quote for the Board to look at in terms of how do we prepare our organization. You know, the last thing any of us want to have to deal with is our tax records, our tax rules, that information, other information, any of that stuff getting out into the public. So cybersecurity and making sure that we have the best technology and the safest lockdown systems, I think is something that we would all agree is critically important. And then when we go into things like human resources, I mean, we've talked about wage studies and that kind of thing. And I would have actually would encourage the Board to hold that thought just for a while until we make sure that we have the right positions in place before we look at a wage increase. That would just be something I would like to suggest that we may have the right people, the right positions going forward. And then that will allow us then to work more at the structure. I will say one area that is of dire concern right now is probably our 911. Having dispatchers, it's difficult right now to hire them. And we have our Emergency Services Director and our Assistant Emergency Services Director in that seat multiple times a week. In fact, Matt was booking 7A, 7P in dispatch today because they were not able to staff the emergency services. So that's going to be something that we may need to take a look at sooner than later. And of course, we're written the process right now developing a policy and procedures manual. And with seven unions, there is always something happening. And we're working through a couple of things right now, but at least we're moving forward. And then as we look at property and facilities, as I already mentioned, we've got Capital Improvement Plan document, which was at the back of this, which I hope you had the chance to review because that is really the document that comes to the Board that shows what the scope of priorities in the county. And so I think that that's going to be something that we'll need to look at. And in fact, the end of this month is the deadline for department heads to put in information into that document. And I think we had over $8 million of projects that were identified in the last Capital Improvement Plan. But what's not in that plan is we have nothing in the plan that addresses the potential build-out downstairs, which is going to be at least half a million dollars if not more to complete that project, even though there would be a cost sharing associated with that. We've not gotten the RFPs. The RFPs will be sent out beginning of April for that project. And then once they come back, then they'll come to the Board and the Board will have to make a final decision if it makes sense to move forward with that project. So that's additional expense. Another project that's recently been brought up and it's gaining great traction is the discussion about the juvenile or youth detention and treatment facility. That request is a $50 million request to the state for that facility, but that is just for brick and mortar. There is no, there's no, I should say, in those dollars, that's not for staffing, that's not for, this is just for.
Not operations.
Pardon? For operations, thank you. So those are.
Except I don't think they're really looking at very much cost sharing by the counties. The estimate they gave us would be maybe $70,000 a year from us. Because it's cost sharing among several counties. And it will be relative to how much we use it. So our cost, they estimated it to be about $70,000.
So the first thing that will be happening probably within the next week or two is we'll be seeing potentially a feasibility study, a request to complete a feasibility study with the company that completed the center that's in Genesee County. So there was a conversation with the individual that was the architects for that project. And so I anticipate that that will be coming before the Board shortly to be able to, again, probably cost share on that expense. But that will be ideally a three-county initiative, shared three ways. I know there were discussions, there are going to be discussions this week with Antrim County and the Antrim Circuit Court to gain their level of engagement. And so that's still a variable. And what the true cost will be by the time we're ready to move forward with that project are still kind of unknown. So how to budget for that will be something to definitely kind of take into consideration.
Except that if we don't get the state money, we don't do it.
True. True.
That's the assumption. If we do not get the money, it doesn't happen.
We should know by June, from what I'm hearing from legislators. We'll hear something. So.
So we'll have to spend some, but it's not going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I don't, I don't think we have any idea yet what we're doing.
I know, it's just that we're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands and that one shouldn't be.
But I think we have to be careful that we don't put the cart before the horse. And I don't know that Cameron has done the background work to give us a good picture.
Actually, he's done quite a bit.
Well, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I guess I would just.
So I think that's a good point.
I mean, yeah, I mean, construction costs, there's also outfitting desk, hardware. I mean, there's a lot of things that I don't know whether the state will cover. So I'm in agreement there with a lot of, there's more we don't know than what we know not to cast doubt on the estimates so far, but there's a lot of holes there yet, so.
The FNE or what will be the operating management agreement, like what percentage will we pay for the operation of the facility? So there's just a lot of variables.
Yeah.
So you just kind of, this feasibility study then should really help us get some insight into where we should go for our next step. So maybe just holding off until then is the kind of.
I haven't been involved specifically with the feasibility study would cover if it's just demographics or kind of looking at a multi-county area. I think that's to be determined yet. So once we see what that document looks like, we'll have a better understanding. I will, I think it's fair to say that we've heard from the beginning that Grand Travis County will take the lead on this project from the standpoint that it will most assured, assuredly be in Grand Travis County. And so from that perspective, they will be kind of the ones leading this, I think, to a greater extent in terms of the timeline. And they pretty much have said that they're not prepared to take on any new projects at this time because they're in the process of doing a comprehensive feasibility study. So best case scenario, if the state said, we're going to give you $35 million and we want you to build this project, you know, do this project in three years, 25 years or something like that, it might be sooner, they might say two to three, then we would probably still be having to take the lead with discussions with Grand Travis County in terms of the actual location. There is not a location for a site yet. So there's much to be determined. But it is exciting and it's something that we do need to be thinking about.
And I think we just have to make sure we remember this will not be a county facility, it will be a court facility. Big difference.
And I don't know, that I have a clear understanding of exactly what that needs in terms of.
Needs the courts run it and not the counties. So go ahead.
I think we need to be real careful because we need, our role as a commission, I think, is to express the need for the services. But the less we get involved in the nitty-gritty of that now, it is a state issue. And the state may say it's a county or it may say it's a court. We need to be careful, I think. And what I'm hearing is that we need to be very cautious about being too eager to go forward because this is really a state responsibility.
I support that.
I absolutely do.
Same, same thing I heard today from commissioners from other counties, so.
I think it's, I mean, I think holding off until we have all the information is a wise decision.
So it just, I'm just putting it on the radar for discussion. And you know, some other things that we've talked about are safety and security issues here for the Government Center itself. Everything from, you know, do we, how do we proceed with our county building and our court system? Other counties have gone to more secure systems. What does that mean for us? We will have a security assessment done this week with MMRMA. Their security consultant will be coming in, doing a walkthrough, assessing everything from our cameras to our panic buttons, to any other types of security issues that we have, and what is kind of new technology or best practice, or how can we, you know, how can we look to implement those? The good thing about that is MMRMA does have grants through their RAP grant program that will be able to potentially support some of these initiatives. They recently gave some dollars to our court system that you heard about through the RAP grant. They are matching grant dollars though. So whatever we do, it's not a full grant, it would be matching grant dollars. And then we have the towers and broadband. And I think most of you know, we have applied for, or our providers have submitted for the RAP grants, which is encouraging. And then we also have a $5 million proposal out to our legislators right now in terms of a shared initiative with Representative Betsy Copia and Senator DeMose to partner on legislation to grant $5 million in allocation for Leland County for our broadband initiative. So that's very exciting and it seems to be an opportunity for a cross-party, cross-house and units of government. So that's very exciting. So we'll see how that all goes, it's very preliminary at this point. If that were to happen, that gives us an opportunity to look at the dollars already currently committed that we were prepared to use from the ARPA funds. So again, maybe some of us are moving forward to look at those allocations, which at this point, I think most of you know, 3.2 million has been allocated to the broadband project, which leaves a gap of 1.8. So that's something that we need to be looking at, that that's an expense that the county is agreeing to take on if we are not successful in dealing with additional funding. So I'm kind of painting a picture here. There's a lot happening and you add in some of those programs and partnerships like the Northern Lakes Community Mail Health Initiative that is a partnership, multi-county partnership that has been, it's in the process of being reorganized right now. Beta, which we heard about recently, the Area Transit Authority, which we are a partner in that, is obviously also having some restructuring issues. The Airport Authority, which Frisner Work was just sharing that they are having growing pains as well. The Health Department, the Substance Abuse Prevention Initiative with LIF, which is Leland investing for teens, and the Leland County Family Coordinating Council, and the Board of Health, as well as the Housing Authorities and several others. So the intent of me putting this report together was not only selfishly to give me an opportunity to really do a lot of fact-finding and information gathering, but it also was an opportunity for me to share from the departments and with my assessment as to what are all of the moving parts of the county. So when we initially had our conversations about when we need to set goals, I don't disagree with that, but I also am very mindful that there are so many initiatives and programs and processes currently in place or pending projects and pending initiatives that it kind of just gave me a kind of a moment to pause and just kind of assess where do we feel we need to put our energy, what do we need to, what kind of process do we need to establish to do that? And again, looking at the Capital Improvement Plan, knowing that that document is going to be updated in the next month and then presented to the Board, which dovetails that perfectly with setting the budget for 2024. So again, this was truly the intent of me putting this information together. I don't, this was not for me to lay out a comprehensive action plan at this point. It was to provide a summary of all the programs and services and initiatives that are currently taking place and allowing the commissioners to have that full picture of what's happening. I'm sure I probably missed something in this document. So I will, if you have any questions.
I'd just like to say thank you for this very comprehensive summary. It's great.
So do you have a suggestion or do we have an idea of a plan to prioritize what we're looking at and what do you think would be that process? Because obviously we can't do it all. And I would borrow from a line, I'm looking at a SIP, Capital Improvement, in the planning context, one of the questions is, is this community legally obligated to perform this service? And that's where we need to do our first business, is things that we're legally obligated to do and also in care of this facilities as a obligation to our taxpayers to make sure that we keep those in order. So I guess that's kind of a question and a comment at the same time, but we need to take care of first order of things first. And there's even more of those, I think, than, if you look at this list, than we want to do. I don't mean to laugh at it, but it's, there are a lot of things that actually needed to be done and we need to have a plan to do. So I don't know, do you have an idea?
So I'm sure I probably addressed it too, but that is really the intent of the Capital Improvement Plan. So that is not done by the commissioners. It's done through the Planning Committee and they have.
Planning Commission.
And they have a subcommittee.
Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to bring that up earlier, but you were doing such a good job. You were on a roll. So you know, I just wanted to point out that when the Planning Commission did score the projects that were in there, and this has probably been, I'm going to guess, a couple years ago now, that they did score them, but really, they honestly need to be scored from us because it was really interesting. The scores came back and they were, we just kind of had a good laugh about it because they were all over the board. And you know, like what was way up, I, just for example, if I remember correctly, like way up high was like police cars, replacing our police cars. And yet then, I'm like, well, we already have a plan for that, we budget for that, we have our motor pool fund and we're replacing for a year. And they're like, oh, then that's not a big issue. So it was just, I think, I think that it would be important for us to score. And I believe that Commissioner Rexroth is on the right idea. I think it's really important that we look really carefully at these and start, you know, knocking out, especially our HVAC system here, and get that done once and for all.
Great. So to your point, the Capital. So to your point, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is in the, the most recent one is in the packet, and they do, they take all the information, they write what the project is.
Ooh.
I must not be moving in. Okay, cheerleader.
Got it.
It's a joke. So when they compile this, then they rank them in terms of importance and the dollar amount, and all of that is based on the feedback that's given from the respective departments. So, you know, we'll have to speak with Judge Kramkowski and with Cameron and say, look, we need you to fill out an application or, you know, one of the forms for the Capital Improvement Plan to put this on the plan so that we at least have a placeholder, some sort of ideas, what kind of costs would we be looking at over the next few years for this? So again, it's a placeholder that gives us an idea of how to budget or how to plan for the future. And then, then the next thing is they rank them. But this is, the commissioners are the ones that approve this document. So if the commissioners say, this is great, they do the legwork, they put all the information together, and then the commissioners say, we want to have a work session to go through and to re-rank this based on the knowledge that you all have, or the impact or information, I should say, that we get from your constituents, would give an opportunity to create a more, perhaps viable ranking according to what the commissioners want to move forward with. So that would give us maybe our top 10 initiatives or our priorities, if you will, moving forward into, you know, into 2024 through 2027. And we can talk about things like what we know in terms of availability for financing, or, you know, the jail bonds would be paid off by 2027. So what does that do for our ability to move forward with some of these projects in a timeline? Or what is most critical to the infrastructure of this building and those that work here, such as the HVAC system? So there's a lot of different things, I think, that come into play. And this exercise has certainly given me, this is probably the best opportunity for me to learn all of the challenges, nuances, and opportunities here within the county than probably any meeting I could sit at. So this is, hopefully you find it as informative as I did.
Let's make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to comment and question. And let's hear from everybody today, their initial reaction to what our administrator has provided us. I don't see us making decisions today. I see us making sure we get a common understanding of what Deb shared, that we heard, priorities from all of the department heads and all of the issues. What you didn't mention was the drainage districts and the expense there and the size of the building and the request from the Parks Department. I mean, we don't know enough yet to make many decisions leading into where we're headed.
Can I have a question?
First, Cam, and then Gwen.
Mine's just a question.
I, okay, so I'm looking over the pages of the CIP. And I guess, is there a, like, item number? Is, the first one's 2016 or 2016-02. Does that mean that it was first brought to, suggested, recommended in 2016?
You know, I really can't speak to that. So if Trudy compiles this document, so I would refer to the commissioners.
I think that is correct.
So they're ranked by the, maybe the year they were brought to our attention, and then there's a start and an end date, I get that. And there's a priority, but there's just a ton in here, you guys. I mean, this would take a day. I mean, seriously, who, and you said the Planning Commission is in charge of taking all this?
All the departments, all their information to Trudy, and then the Planning Commission compiles all that and then makes it available and ranks it based on-
But we would have, I mean, we set the budget, so what happens or doesn't happen is up to our budget priorities as well. So it's got to be a cooperative effort, right? I mean, that's, at the end of the day, it can be a priority, but if we say there's no money to spend on it.
Yeah, I was next.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Elvira, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure that Cam got her question answered.
I guess I feel like I need either time to digest this or some further training or explanation for me to even make any sense of these pages. I was totally overwhelmed when I tried to read this, and there's not a ton of information on these lines. So, yeah, I just, I would request that, if we could ever add that to our training. I mean, it'd be lovely.
Trudy.
Gwen. So I need a little clarification. We've got 40 minutes, so we're not discussing goals today because this says potential board goals, but this is what we're discussing, isn't it? We're not here to talk about goals.
Well, learning that is the goal, isn't it?
No, there are more goals than that. I mean, that's not all we do is fix things.
But what this document has, I believe, if I can try to answer that question, is you ask each of the department chairs or department heads to provide information about their department's goals and needs for the next year. And it was my, my understanding is that's what we're, our meeting today is to understand what we heard from our department heads. They need to do the essential services they're providing, yes.
Okay. That's good, that's good. So we're not doing 2023 board goals today?
I have documents that represent board goals from the last two or three years, and I have to apologize. Lois had shared some information with me about some of her ideas for 2023 boarders, and somehow they ended up on the back here. I think it's because I thought perhaps they came from Chet, and I wanted to just share that. So take it for what it's worth, some of them are well-pointed, so.
But I think, we can't do both in the next 40 minutes.
I understand. I can just give these to everyone and they can take a look at them.
Thank you.
I think in 2021, there were no goals. And then in 2022, I believe there were just two.
We had goals.
So I didn't find anything in the documentation, so, but like I said, last year, there were two primary. So it's really up to the board.
I mean, this is good, if we just focus on this. I just needed clarification because we can't do it all today.
Commissioner O'Rourke, I saw your hand.
Yeah, well, the way I see it, the goals is fine. We have a lot on the plate right now, like Cam said, we've got so much stuff on here. There's certain things we can't, if they're in progress, we got to finish them, okay? Those have priorities, because there's things that do not, that we're not really engaged that much in, but the priority should be what we're already started and what the last board before us started. Those are your priorities.
Um.
Commissioner Lutner?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to point out, and it will probably help Cam, that what the Planning Commission did is we prioritize them. So that's a priority grouping.
Right.
That's what, that's what we did. So that's what I'm saying, we could probably easily come back and-
Adjust that?
Yeah, yeah, I think we should do that our own, too.
I agree.
And even, whatever, have a sit-down if we'd like. In as far as goals go, I'm, of course, reluctant to pack on a whole lot of goals until we at least prioritize a lot of these issues that we are responsible for in our campus right here. And also, we need to start looking out as far as, like, this still seems like the new courthouse, but probably within 10 years, we're going to be re-roofing this massive building, at the very least, re-shingling it. So at that time, point, we'll decide, you know, do we go asphalt shingles or do we go metal at that time? And so that'll be, that'll be a very big cost at that time, too. And, and I think, and I thank you for bringing up the drain districts because I see, you know, yet another proposed Little Glen Drain District, and I think that was mentioned to us once, and it's already underway. So that's alarming to me because those are, those are going to be a big hefty tax on all of the residents in this county.
Mr. Kramer.
I kind of just have a question for Commissioner Lutner. I was just wondering, when was the last survey done? Or do you know, Deb? I don't know.
Survey for what?
Didn't you say there was a survey done from the departments a while ago? You said a while back, on prioritizing?
Planning, I think.
Oh, we, the CIP, and prioritize the CIP.
When, was that done recently?
Oh, I think it's done every year, I think.
Okay.
But we prioritize it, it's been at least a couple of years since we did this, the categories.
Okay.
The priority group, it's been at least a couple of years since the Planning Commission did that, as far as I remember. At least that's, well, that's when I did, was two or three years ago.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think just-
So I think it is updated.
No, go ahead.
I believe it is updated every year. In fact, that's, the department heads have to get their documents in by the end of this month, so that would go to the board and then you would see. The most recent one was 2023 through 2028, but the next one will be 2024 through 2029. So they're looking at a five-year plan, just kind of how this is developed. And so we could even look at it in terms of structuring, year one, year two, year three, how the commissioners would like to.
Before, I want to make comment. I've been on the board for eight years, and I do not believe the Board of Commissioners has dealt with the Capital Improvement Plan in the manner that they need to do it. We receive it, we don't approve it, we don't do our budgeting from it as much as I think we need to. And I would urge us this year to make sure we use the Capital Improvement Plan that is being developed as we establish our goals. We must do that. It doesn't mean we have to approve what the Planning Commission gives us, but I think we have to give it more attention than we have in the past years. I, before I call you, Melinda, would you agree with that?
I do.
Maybe, last year, I think we maybe spent 10 or 15 minutes on the Capital Improvement Plan and then went on to some other business. Gwen.
So it sure seems like we should schedule a work session to spend some time on this. We sure can't do it in a half hour.
No.
And at that point, we could also do a discussion of, in addition to the, to some critical needs. I haven't been on the commission for eight years, just two and a half, but what I observed sitting out there for 10 years was that, just the idea of chunking off critical things every year. I really hear your need for a facilities manager. We had that as a goal last year and did not deal with it. And I hear what you're saying about IT. We've got a couple of critical things, but beyond that, I think we have a couple of other goals beyond the building that we as commissioners representing the people of this county should address. So I sure hope we will schedule a work session so we can deal with this in the detail it deserves, because there's a lot of work here and the people are speaking.
Thank you, Gwen. Doug?
This SIP has a very condensed justification and needs is there, if we're going to be, you know, working through a work session, is there, is the information that this was condensed from available to us to look at? And maybe more detailed justifications or needs if we're going to be asked to prioritize for funding or stuff? I mean, I don't know how one else feels, but it seems, I mean, this is, and not to not take the advice of the Planning Commission, but if we're asked to give input, I would sure, if it's available, to like have either background documents or things that, because I'm sure this, this isn't exactly, somebody just turned a couple of sentences here, that you've got backup for this, or, right?
It's a pretty comprehensive assessment. I don't know if I had one in the packet, I may not have. Actually, it was in the information. It was in the third, it was page 114 out of 117. So in the packet, it has the submitter form. So it shows you there on page 114 about what is requested in terms of the department, the project, justification. Again, is it legally obligated to perform this service? So to your point, question number two. And then, you know, through all of these, the project timeline, coordination, it's pretty comprehensive. And so we would have the ability to, any specific projects that the commissioners would want to dive deeper into, we would have these documents available to us to be able to look at if we felt we needed to reprioritize or assess the prioritization that the commissioners are given. I would remind you that with going through this process and having all these documents presented by the end of March, I'm not sure exactly what the Planning Commission's timeline is to generate the new, the new document. So we can either work from what we have if the commissioners want to move forward, or to wait until the new document is put together. But I think it would be helpful. And we also have the opportunity, which is the commissioner's decision, is do we want to delve up some of these things into the different committees? We have a Republican Rounds Committee. Do we want to, or do we want it to be the committee of the whole? And that's just decisions that the commissioners can make on how to proceed.
I would support it being a committee of the whole, at this point.
Other questions or ideas? Cam?
Just in looking at what you've presented to us and the discussion that we've had just in these first 45 minutes, I still feel like, as a group of seven commissioners, we can come up with some goals or priorities, just how are we going to tackle our job going forward? Or provide some sort of commitment to the community, to the county, about our seriousness and how we're going to figure all this out. And I guess I kind of see that summed up in, I think, one of some of your words, Deb, Ms. Allen, sorry, organizational and strategic priorities. You know, I just feel like with four new members on the board and just a ton of information that we're being given each, each meeting, that I just feel like, I would like to say, a commitment to the community that we are taking this very seriously. And there's some overarching goals that we want to make sure that we're being as, you know, taking care of the budget as strongly as people are asking us to. So I guess I agree with Gwen saying that it's not really a place to set goals, but I still think we need to finish this discussion with an agreement that we are going to spend some time to figure this out. And I also think we might have to hire a grant writer, because I don't know where all this money is going to come from unless we find somebody on, within the ranks that can even push this forward. So, yeah, I don't know if that made sense. I just, I feel like we owe it to the community to take this job seriously. And I think that's what goals are about, saying that this is what we plan to do in the next timeframe and this is, and you can hold us accountable for that, so.
Agreed. When I read the document, and I think it was a very good document, very, very educational for me, but I was overwhelmed as I, and I focused on the 2023 goals for each of the departments and their statements about what they needed. And I just wondered how we were going to ever, ever address it all. And it is overwhelming. I wanted Deb to be able to hear from each of us today, our initial ideas about priorities and where we're going as a county commission. We've all read what every department said they needed, we've all heard ourselves talk about it. But what are our priorities? What direction do we want to give to our administrator after seeing the summary of services and expressions of 2023 needs? If that'd be useful.
It'd be incredibly useful, absolutely.
What, do you want us to tell her what we want to see?
When you get done reading this document where she represented all of the needs from the departments and all of the statement about 2023 goals and all of the outstanding projects that we're aware of, the building needs and the park needs and the boat needs and the storage needs and the expansion needs, what are your priorities? Because our administrator will come back with recommendations and suggestions, but she needs to hear from all of us what we want her to- she needs to hear from all of us what we want her to, to focus on. That's, at least that's my goal. I mean, that's what I think we have a responsibility to do.
And what are, and where I'm struggling is our goals always go beyond just what the building needs or what the, I mean, we focus on that.
But I think that's the purpose of this meeting.
Is just.
She prepared a summary of services.
Just how to run the county. Okay.
Provide the essential services of the county.
Well, what I, we, we, as we have very little money to spend every year, so we have to be very, very careful about. My experience and my observation is we do a little bit each year, we chunk it down. I really hear facilities manager. And we've talked about that for a long time. And I hear you, I, I saw I'm just repeating myself. And then, and the other, those are, if you, whatever you feel, wherever you feel we need to go on the finance department, the IT and the facilities, so you can run this place I think I would have a couple of other board goals extraneous to this function, functioning government center. And the rest we chunk out, chunk away it the best we can, because we don't have a lot of money to spend.
Kam.
But that's my two cents.
And I agree with that, but I think that's why we need overarching goals or organization strategies so that we can tackle this multitude of projects. Yeah, I think we need to agree on what we feel is the focus. So I have a list I'd be happy to send you. I, I went through, you know, the document and made notes for myself that I'd like to share with you. I don't know if I want to read them off, but unless you want me to, but I just.
I think it's instructional for us to hear from each of us what we're communicating with the administrator. So if.
Yeah, I, I totally think that, again, I said the grant writer, because I don't think we can get any of this done without not just relying on Trudy or a few people who have those skills right now. I totally want you to go forward with succession planning. I, I just retired, I know what that's all about. Sustainability of our natural resources, I hear Lois loud and clear, serving on the Solid Waste Council, I want all our decisions to be made with that core belief that we all agree that our natural resources are, should be at the center of our decision making. The facilities manager, just looking at that, yeah, this is, I know those three men, they're amazing, but they can't do it all. I think a wage study, I don't know if I totally agree with that comes after you have a structure, organizational structure study. I think they go hand in hand. And I really thought the comment about employee benefits are not the draw they used to be. I think we need to listen to these words that the department is, are telling us and we need to be proactive in trying to get new people coming to the county for the right reasons. I think communication, I just know that we need to do a better job. So that website has got to be stellar, it's got to really shine and show us, show the, show the community that we know what we're doing. And the policy and procedures, you know, I just feel like as a new commissioner, there's just so much to know. So I just would really appreciate even a commissioner policy and procedure manual, so.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Jamie?
Oh, well, I'm going to say something, it's not going to be as good as that, but I would just like to, I, I hear from both Gwen and Kam that they're looking for these overarching goals. And I think we are fulfilling our goal, or at least it should be noted that we, I feel like are functioning really soundly as a board. And if we can continue that and continue really checking in with Captain Deb and making sure that.
Promoted.
Right, yeah. Making sure that we're really well educated and, you know, we have these lists that the Planning Commission can give to us and then really just all have this conversation about, you know, these, I don't know how many dozen, half dozen, things that we would like to prioritize and then move forward. I think that would be a, a good, a good way for us to, to move together as a team.
Your turn, Doug.
Hey, all right. Well, you know, I think when, when we talk about goals, we have to look at a mission statement. You don't know what your goals are unless you know what your mission is. And I think that is pretty well outlined in MCL and I can, that, that authorizes county government to begin with and tells us what we need to do, what we're supposed to do. There's core functions involved there and that's got to be our first priorities. We have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers of this county to spend their money wisely and to make sure we're taking care of first priorities. Those things that are legally required to be provided, those things that maintain facilities that county residents already have made an investment in. And, you know, as far as like a small, a size, so I don't have an exact list, but I would look at guiding principles along that line and look for your feedback on that. And hopefully this board would look at things the same way. We have to do what we're, what we're required to do first and, and then work down the list. In that regards, I don't, I'm not opposed to facilities manager, because I think in many cases, we would have taken, you know, better care of our, we could take better care of our taxpayers' money if we had someone full-time investing, no disrespect to anyone that's been doing it so far, but it's a, it is a bigger job than it has been in the past. But that's, I guess I look through those and look, okay, what, what authorizes us to be here? What do we have to take care of? And that's the priorities that I would express, I guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Rourke.
Well, first of all, Doug is a hard act to follow. I mean, I had a few things, but I think you covered them all. The main thing I look at is, is, you know, your obligation, health, safety and welfare of the people in the county. The 911 concerns me that, I know one dispatcher that's been working alone at night, what happens if he trips and falls, whatever. Health, sa, that's your job, is health, safety and welfare. You know, sure, we have to be financially responsible, but I'm concerned about, and I'm a little paranoid, okay, because I'm a former police officer. You people are so susceptible to getting hurt up here. This building is open. If you bring somebody else in, you bring the health department in, you bring, you know, you bring undocumented aliens in, I, we don't know what's out there. We know that this is one of the easiest buildings in my mind to make a good. It, if I'm going to make something in the news, it's going to be Traverse City in the cherry festival week, okay? Because we're going to be national news. Health, safety, welfare, the, the risk, Michigan municipal risk building, we, I want to see a lot of improvements there and I, other than that, I think Doug covered it all. Thank you.
I just want to see us concentrate on providing the essential services and mandated service, or legally obligated essential services and mandated services at, at the most effective and least costly way possible. I don't want to see us putting any new taxes on, on our citizens. I think that we're in for a real bumpy ride here in the county. If we look at housing, we look at taxation, if we look at energy costs and, and the projected energy costs, it's, it's going to be a bumpy ride. So I think we should be doing what we absolutely have to do to maintain essential mandated quality service here to our taxpayers and, and not be adding anything else onto them at this point. I think we have to be looking at this facility and what we are obligated to do for this facility to make this facility last for as long as absolutely possible. It was built at the time, they said it was a hundred-year courthouse. We've got a ways to go. We've got to fix the wall out there, we got to fix our HVAC, we have to do some face, facelifting up within this courthouse itself. And we have to bear in mind, I did want to point out, because I think this was just an extremely interesting graph on page 85 with the population and the trends. And, you know, our, our younger populations are just steadily, steadily dropping. We're just, we're just not replacing our youth. And I think that's just as these other discussions go forward with this juvenile detention center, that it's going to be really important that we keep that in mind. And we've got our senior population rising in, in mirror reflection.
Don't look at me when you say.
Well, I was just reading the graph, just reading the graph.
You're getting older every year too, Melinda.
So.
You are in the middle of that graph moving up.
Uh, yeah, pretty about in the middle. Yeah, that's right. So, so, and I'm also doing my part for the youth in this county, so, and housing them. So, yeah, that, that's, that's pretty much where we go. I just think we need to really look at, and communications came up, I think, I've always said that's just extremely important that we communicate that well. As far as this year, and I know it's probably going to happen quickly, I've, I've got, as I said before, a great concern about our representation for BETA. And I've got even greater concerns that if, I think we need to look at, such as, you know, I know, I know darn well when that authority was approved in 99 that there was no concept that articles of incorporation could be changed without coming back to this board of commissioners, since they have the ability to tax us out here. And if our representation is getting dwindled even more, I think we need to tackle that. And I think that has to be done pretty, pretty damn quickly.
After you.
Well, and, and I'm, I don't have the list that, that Kam has, but number one on my list is that we take care of what we have. And, and we must do that. And, and I want to make sure that staff working here are comfortable, they're not too hot or too cold.
And safe.
And that the building's taken care of and our parks are taken care of. And other than providing those mandated services, we must take care of what we have. And, and that's, that's got to be a part of what we do. I, I have partnerships on my list and it involves BETA and it involves community mental health and it involves youth detention. We have to foster those partnerships that give us opportunity to serve our, our residents and still do it fiscally responsibly. And I share the concern with Melinda about representation. I, I do, but we can't do it all. We, we must work with our partners and, and our nonprofit partners too. And in your report, Deb, you had a couple of pages from Trudy and the Housing Action Committee. I do feel like we have to figure out how we can continue to work on, on housing. And that's not building bricks and mortar with county funds, but we, there are some things we can do with our community partners and, and I think we must do. And I was so proud today when I participated in the webinar about the statewide septic system, because we're one of 11 counties that have, we're taking care of our environment. And, and I know it was controversial here, but it's coming and we must do it and we must look for ways to take care of our environment. That doesn't mean we've got to spend a lot of money doing it. That means we have to be responsible and do that. I did have on my list though, that there is an opportunity for this board to do more than mandated responsibilities if our residents want us to do that. But we have to be very careful that we listen to our residents and do those things that our residents, whether that's because of the seniors or because of the young families or because of their business people. What might we do? So we ought to be open to doing some non-mandated things, but I think we ought to do that in a very careful fashion. And, and, and as much as possible, and I said the first time I sat at this table, and not do the silly stuff. And we, we got to focus on what our residents must have or want to have. We got a lot of responsibility.
I hear about we have to, we have to plan for energy costs. And one of the ways we can do that is by planning for, for instance, solar. If there are grants out there and we can get that, we can, we can plan for higher energy costs in the future by creating our own energy here. I have an EV. It's about the best thing since sliced bread. And wouldn't it be wonderful if our employees could drive to work with an EV? And if our tourists, our guests in the summer, if I'm going to drive an EV somewhere, I look to see, are there charging places? Are there places I can charge? If, and as we buy cars for senior services, cars for construction codes, we could save a whole lot of money on gas in the future. If when we replace those cars, we replace them with EVs and they can charge right here, I maybe spend $20, $30 a month to charge my car. I do not change my gas, my oil, I do not buy gas. There's a lot of savings there. If we could be, be producing solar energy, boy, would that be a hedge against future energy costs. So I think we need to look at those things. And EVs are coming, ready or not, we need to get ready. The other thing is I endorse and support your comment about housing. And there are, there's a lot happening, we can do a lot with partners. And there's a whole lot to learn there. And I think we can do it without spending, I think our goal needs to be to not spend taxpayer dollars on that. Find a funding source, there are funding sources, there are nonprofits, there are partnerships. I think that also, in addition to these things, we need a couple of those goals.
We're nearing the, the end and we want to make sure that, Deb, you have an opportunity to question any, anything that you've heard today. So you're on.
Thank you. Well, what I'm hearing from all of you is that we want to look at anything that we're doing going forward under the lens of fiscal responsibility. So I think that seems to be a common ground and if that, if that in essence was our, our number one goal, then we would have underneath that probably, it was not by accident that I put these in three segments for you in terms of issues, in terms of people or positions. I really try to focus more on position than, than the people. So I think if you looked at it, you know, from that perspective, that positions and then property or facilities, and then from the standpoint of partnerships, that may start to help us to build a structure, to create kind of a goal conceptual plan. And then we can break down each one of those, where are those partnerships, where the gaps are in the services. So I, I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're really as far apart as what it might feel like we are in terms of moving this, this discussion forward. So I think what, I guess the thing in terms of next steps is what we want to see, if you want me to kind of classify some of these different programs or processes, or if we want to start with the CIP and then see where the gaps are in the capital improvement plan, even though that's just capital, like you said, we still need to talk about programmatic partnerships. So I think there's some options there. I might maybe ask to maybe brainstorm a little bit with Kam and Ty in terms of next steps for a, a planning process or moving forward. Just want to think through that a little bit.
I'll just, and Kim, is there consensus that this SIP is going to be updated? When, what's the date?
I'm not sure when the plan comes out. Do you have to know more when it's published? Last year it was late summer.
Before the budget, though.
Yeah, I think we need to do that prior to, don't you, Melinda? I don't think, we, we can't wait for the Planning Commission.
We, we need to. Prior, yes, and that's where I would say we should begin. Let's look at our capital improvement plan and let's prioritize it and let's.
Let's look at our capital improvement plan and let's prioritize it and let's
So if we use the document
Work out some next steps.
So if that was the document that we started, at least to start the discussion, we use the plan that was provided to you to look through those topics and see if there are, maybe, I don't know if we just wanna say pick out your top 10, or if that
We can only do a couple.
Or rank them.
Yeah, if you wanted to rank maybe the
I just wanna just chime in just a little bit. I think maybe between you, me and Kathy, we can go through the CIP. Because as I'm looking at it, and Melinda may remember, and Ty, a lot of these things you're taking care of.
That's true.
So before you all dive in, maybe there can be a collaboration of what really we see that you would be looking to pay for that wouldn't be a grant or, you know, something like that to help condense it.
Just an option. Check with the, you know, with our elected officials with the treasurer, let them review it, let the clerk review it. And so that we kinda get, you know, the share, look at what are some of the key things that they see and then come back to a work session and say, here are some of the top 10, top 20 things that, that issues
I guess that was why, kinda not, not to delay it, but like deal with a real, whatever the real list is at the time, rather than spend time on things that
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would we be open to a early May work session to look at our, our, that, that would give staff opportunity to put together the revised list and the fiscal stuff that's already been done?
Okay, so then what about our goals? Our 2023 goals? We can't wait till May. That means we've got six months to go. I'm sorry.
The year's half over.
I'm talking about the capital improvement and our fiscal stuff.
Okay.
That we need to make sure that we got the right list and the right cost and, and funding sources. And that we do that, I don't think we can be ready to do that in less than a month. Jen? I mean
Probably end of May.
Yeah, I would say end of May.
End of May?
So mid, mid-May somewhere for a work session that you probably wanna allow a little longer time for.
To do our long-term planning and our short-term planning on, on our capital expenses.
Yeah.
And that's critical.
Okay, when can we do goals? Can we have a work session after the executive meeting in April? Can I?
Sure, we can.
Can we? Our board goals?
I, I think we can always bring an idea to the commission table.
Yes, we can.
And, and, and we can do that any month we want to.
Yes.
And, and I, I, I think that, I think it's timely to do that. So if you wanna bring something to April, do it. If you wanna bring it
So are you saying don't do goals this year?
Well, I think we've just talked about a number of big goals.
Yeah. We haven't talked about Board goals. That's, we're talking two different things here. That's what has been difficult for me.
I, let me, let me, and I don't wanna talk too much, but let me, I mean, I think we talked about goals coming from our departments, from our administrator, from our committees, from our, and we've got one, we've got a list of goals from the Housing Action Committee that's coming forward. We've got all that. We, they're on paper. We, and we, we use our executive committee meetings to talk through those. And anybody at this table can add anything to the agenda that they want to at any time.
Okay, but we usually have a list of goals for the board for the year.
And I think we just talked about a big list. We talked about a big list.
This is totally relevant. We're talking two different things here. Yes, we need to do facilities.
Can I take this one?
We need to attend to that. What are our goals this year?
Gwen, I think, I think what Ty's trying to say is, we need to, and this is how I'm feeling right now, which is we need to define where we're going before we can get these overarching goals, because we have some pressing issues that we need to attend to. And we need to figure out which ones are the most pressing, so we can move forward with those and then maybe define, it's kinda like knowing who you are. Like, we gotta know who we are. We need to know where we're going before we can say, oh, we, you know, wanna get there at this speed, or we wanna, you know, be able to deliver this. I think
That's not what
That's kinda how I'm feeling.
What we have managed to do for the last few years is have four or five goals for the commission for the year. And then we do this stuff too. And maybe some of this is part of that. I'm just very concerned about us not coming up with our goals until May.
I gotta, what, what kind of goals did you have in mind?
Jeez, we
Well, did you, did you read this stuff on what the goals were for last year and the year before? Something, we had a list like that. And one of our goals would be to attend to pressing facilities issues. And it would be more specific than that. So what we're talking about here is, and it's very important, what does the county need and the building need and the people need to function? Yes, that's extremely important. But what does the 2023 Board of Commissioners, what's our vision beyond, including that? Or is that all we're gonna do? We don't have
We have so many things we're working on right now that, get that done, that's one goal at a time. That we've got done, we've completed the building.
We've always had, we've always had some
Let me suggest, let me suggest, because we're out of time, that we add at Gwen's request, the goals, 2023 board priorities, board goals, to our April Executive Committee meeting. Everybody come prepared to, to have that discussion at that time.
Thank you. Good.
Is that, is that acceptable?
I don't have any goals other than what we need to work on and what we have on the table.
Then bring that to the meeting.
So, and
Yes?
Doug mentioned our mission. You know, I'm on our website and the Board of Commission, there's a, one paragraph.
Go ahead and read it.
No, I'm not gonna read it. It's, it's, it's not good.
It's not good?
It is not good. Trust me.
Not resonating?
It's not good, okay.
No, and I think there must be a mission statement. I can't believe this board or this county does not have a mission statement. So if we don't, I think Doug, you mentioned that we need a mission statement before we can even talk about goals or how we function. So
Good job, Kama.
I would, I would say a mission statement, or, or something that we can all agree on, then we can break it down. But we need
Thank you.
At one level. That's hard.
Therein might be the devil in the details. Yes, I, I
Crappy mission.
But it's a, it's a target to shoot at, so, yes.
Commissioner Lottner?
I, it's futile, in my opinion. If you wanna bring your goals that you have, your, your plan for programs or whatever that you want to bring as a commissioner for 2023, if you want to bring them in April and, and tell everybody what your goals will be, I, I think that's just fine. What we ended up doing last year, and, and this is, we only sent forward those that we could all agree on, and I just heard that, what we could all agree on. We have direction. When we take our oath of office, when we become a commissioner, we've got our direction. We know what we have to do. That is our statement. That is our mission statement. And beyond that, we all have our mission statement and that's when we run. Then we, we tell our constituents what we are going to do and how we're going to do it to the best of our ability or whatever. It's, it's, it's all there. That's, that's fine. But if you, I mean, I can just see us wasting hours hammering over this stuff unless it's something we can't all agree on. And I just think it's a waste of time. Let's just do the county business and move forward.
Well, I will, I will make sure that on the agenda for the April meeting, we have the opportunity for each one of us to talk about what we wish the county would do and we'll have discussion about that.
Okay. Let's see.
Can we have a supper break?
Oh, we have public comment?
Oh, yes, we have public comment.
Sorry to bring that up.
Thank you. Maybe your work was right.
He's gonna take your job.
Well, how long do you have to wait? Of course, housing is a high priority and it's a very self-serving interest because you can't hire anybody to fill any of these people positions that you have, because you can only work with the pull of a close of hand, because if you reach any further out, there's no place where I'm living. And they turn you down and you die off there. You've seen that with teachers and, you know, EMTs and almost finance managers. But there's also this wonderful window of opportunity and a grant writer that's totally curious about everything in the world and keeps watching those lists and the MCA manuals and MTA manuals, look at the township list of goals as well, or, or funds available and the really IRA, Infrastructure Reduction Act. There are so many aspects to that, just reading through it and trying to pick out things that might work for housing. It's a nightmare of the money's there, how do I get my hands on it, and which one is the best funding source for what I need. So, you know, this won't happen forever. There's federal and state dollars coming towards you. And a lot of these things on your list, you might be able to accomplish if you can get some money, even if you have to match it. But it's an opportunity that won't last forever. So, the grant writer.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Any other comments? Mr. Murphy?
Mission statement, go. MCL 46.11. If you're going anywhere else, you're not going anywhere. And you're in the heart of us. First of all, if we begin with a thorough review of everything we're ready to do, and identifying the mandated and essential and non-essential, you'll find that 90% of all the stuff we want to do is impossible because that's not your job. And non-essential, it means not parks. It doesn't mean parks and ramps. Parks are non-essential. They're not identified in courses by government. So, the other issue I have is that everybody in this building is making and is asked to do things. People out there who paid for all the taxes, they never ask. We just ask to pay for things that you couldn't show them. And that's why, interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Any commissioner comments? Well, I, I have one. Last year, we got into some trouble because we set a goal, a board goal, that wasn't well planned out. And whatever goals we decide to do, we need to make sure we have implementation plans and we know the consequences and we know the cost. And so I do believe that we must be very cautious as we set our goals. Kama?
Jamie? I just wanted to mention this because I think it, it's a good reminder that, you know, we're talking about goals. It's to serve the county as a whole and, and for each of us just to remember that we're here to work together and to do the best that we can. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would move to adjourn.
So adjourned. We have, we have